...from the United States of America and to the Republic of Louisiana, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight we're just going to de-age a little bit from the agenda. First of all, I want to call in Karen Foster, Postman, from Rouse's Point. She has a presentation to make.
As Mr. Rivers said, I'm now sort of in charge in the Rouse's Point post office, and I've been there since January. And shortly after I went there, there was a contest solicited by our Consumer Affairs Office in Albany, looking for the longest-held personal or business post office box customer. And the reason why they wanted to have this contest was because it's Ben Franklin's 300th birthday, and he's America's first Postmaster General. So with our resident expert, Sue Spinner, the clerk, we searched through the 250 applications and we came up with the village. And we found that the village had rented their box on December 22nd, 1953. So we submitted their application and we found out that they won. So I would like to present this plaque to the Rouse's Point Village in appreciation of your 53 years of continuous post office box service.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you.
Thanks to Postmaster General and everybody else.
Oh, if I see him, I will. Bye.
A little hang ass in here. Oh my God. This was signed back by the notice of perjury, Alvin O'Brien, 1953. Second order of business is I'm going to call on Samine before we have a public hearing, so that she's not held here forever.
I like coming here. Thank you. First, I'd like to report on the Northern Tier Expressway. As you know, we had a meeting in early September in Encantin. And I can't say that much had happened, pretty routine, but the spur to Rouse's Point is still on their map. So even though things aren't moving very fast, I think it's important that we stay at the table and keep that there, make sure that they don't decide to remove it. I also have a disc here, I don't know if you're interested, on the PowerPoint presentation. So I leave that with you. Also, on October 19th, there will be a hearing on the Northern Tier Expressway. October 19th, 7:00 at the Old Courthouse in Plattsburgh. So it's just 7:00. So it would be good if they continue seeing us there. Sales tax is looking good, again above projection. This is wild. Every year it keeps going up and up and up. I think those fishing tournaments, we've noticed the last couple of months, were like void of spike in sales tax. There has to be fishing tournaments and building and whatever it is, it's good for all of us. We've also been awarded a Community Development Block Grant for the third time. This is for first-time homebuyers. The last two grants, we've been able to help 24 people. We have a long waiting list. If you have anyone who's a first-time homebuyer and may qualify, you can call me or Robin Brown. Just a little report on our foreclosure auction that we held in June. We netted over $200,000, which is very good for the county. Again, it's a good thing that we do every year. And one other thing I want to report on, as you know, 2009, we're hoping to celebrate the arrival of Champlain on Lake Champlain, 400 years ago. And there's a lot that's being done right now, a lot of preparation. And we will have an outreach meeting for Clinton County on October 12th at City Hall in Plattsburgh at 7:00. The Executive Director of the Commission will be here, and there'll be a PowerPoint. This is to get all the duties on Lake Champlain involved at this major celebration. Hopefully, it would be something like 2009 when the President of the United States was here. So those are the dates I was going to say. City Hall, 7:00, October 12th. You'll be getting a notice on that too. Let me give you this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. At this time, a public hearing is going to be out at 7:15, that's what it was advertised at. But at this time, it'll be out, wishing to address the board itself. All right, we'll close the public part of this meeting, and we'll go on to the agenda at 7:15. Minutes of the previous meeting of September 18th and 20th, you all have copies, so any additions or deletions for the minutes. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written for September 18th and September 20th. Second. Moved by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Moore. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills, you all have copies of the bills. I've been informed that there's no benefit. Add this or delete this tonight. I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight. Moved by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Bertsch. Any comments? Or discussion, rather? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondence? No correspondence. All right, I got a report of the mayor and Board of Trustees. A couple of things here. Fall pickup will be, Brian, last week of October? That will be the last week of October, 24th, 25th, 26th, 27th, somewhere in that time, the fall pickup. Remember, leaves, bagged, small brush, no lumber, no great big trees, no refrigerators. Okay, I'm requesting executive session for possible litigation.
Second.
Rule call, vote for Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Bertsch.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And I have an update on the IEEP meeting that Trustee Jefferson and I attended. We picked up three more municipalities, I think we're up to about 22 now. If you're not aware, the global settlement in 2003 where we got our electrical, our hydro power lauded to 2025, part of that is energy conservation. And the IEEP is an independent electrical efficiency program that we belong to, that the municipal belongs to, and that allows us not to be part of NYSERA and to run our own program. As residents knows, here some time back, we gave away two light bulbs, two of these low-energy light bulbs, everybody. We have a appliance program going on right now, where if you buy certain appliances that are energy-efficient, you'll get a rebate, up to $75, I believe, I'm not sure, the total amount. We have done other things, we've bought energy-efficient streetlights, we've bought, we've done lighting in commercial buildings. It's an excellent program and has the blessing of the governor and the power of the way. I think Trustee Jefferson's got a few things to report on, so if you want to continue on to it, please.
Yep. Thursday, George and I attended the Independent Energy Efficiency Program meeting in Syracuse. And I feel that saving energy is good for the environment and it's a good business practice. So we hope to begin implementing some energy-saving ideas here in the village. Ultimately, what we'd like to do is reduce our demand and cut the dependence on our higher electric rates above our hydroelectric allocation. Some of the things we're going to do is we're going to look to our customers in the village to turn off excess appliances and lights and computers when they're not in use. I know that the government, I work for the government, and we use a lot of energy, and there's a lot of times when energy can be reduced and shut off. And we're also going to approach the school with the idea of hoping to educate the children to start saving energy at an early age, and hopefully, that should reduce our costs here in the village. I also spoke with Jeremiah Schmidt, who is from Honeywell, regarding insulation in the roof at the rec center. We're going to fix the roof next year because we have a problem, it's leaking, and then we're going to put up some insulation because of the sound barrier in the屋墙here too. So we're going to be working on that within the next few months. That's all I have to report on the IEEP.
Thank you, Brian.
I'm sorry. I want to ask a question on the roof. Does that mean that there would be some energy savings that we could potentially get some assistance for?
We could get the insulation aid for.
Great.
On the IEEP.
And the other item on my agenda tonight is I wish...
That's my report. Now, Trustee Jefferson, finish your report, please.
That's it, that's all I got.
Okay. That's it?
Yep.
That's what you were going to do? Night of meeting. Mm-hmm. No, I'm not going to bring that up. Okay.
Didn't you say you had something else to report?
There is, but he told me he's not going to.
No, I'm done.
Okay. The other item on my agenda tonight...
I'm sorry. We've got to deal with too far.
I'd like to make a motion to have an executive session on a judicial matter tonight.
Second. Moved by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Moore. Rule call, all, Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Here.
Aye.
And Trustee Bertsch.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Thank you, Trustee Jefferson. Trustee Penfield.
I'd like to request an executive session to discuss police personnel.
I'll second that.
Okay, rule call, vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Bertsch.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Okay. The next thing I have is an authorization to travel for Nelson Barkholm and John Bernard to attend a distribution system training session in Potsdam. This is sponsored by the Northern New York Water Works Association. It is being held on October 5th, and it looks like they'll be departing and returning the same day. And they're scheduled to use the village vehicle, so I would make a motion that we authorize Nelson and John to be able to attend this training.
I'll second.
Moved by Trustee Penfield, seconded by Trustee Bertsch. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
I have another item which was brought to my attention. I guess it's a letter that was sent to Ms. Marie Quainer, our court clerk, and I'd just like to read part of it because it really sums up exactly what she was able to procure with a grant. "The state's justice courts are of vital importance to New York's justice system and the community, yet the towns and villages that support them often have limited budgetary resources. For these courts to remain viable in an increasingly sophisticated age, they need additional assistance and resources. Therefore, during the 1999 session of the legislature, the unified court system sought establishment of an ongoing program of state assistance to the justice courts. With the aid of the State Magistrates Association and many other friends of the justice courts, our efforts were successful, culminating in enactment of Chapter 280 of the laws of 1999. In the years to come, Chapter 280 will make it possible for justice courts to acquire computers and other essential electronic equipment and to maintain a dignified appearance. To fund the provisions of Chapter 280 during the 2006, 2007 state fiscal year, the legislature included an appropriation of $1 million in the judiciary budget. During this past spring, we invited all interested towns and villages to apply for grants from these appropriations. We received 373 applications totaling $1.6 million. I am pleased to advise you that the village of Rouse's Point has been awarded a grant as described in the enclosed list of items awarded. And it would appear that there were some miscellaneous office items, filing cabinets, those sorts of things, and also a fairly sophisticated laser desk crinker. So at very little cost to the village, the total value of the board was $2,724.94. So I would imagine that Tony is very happy about that, and she did bring this to our attention, and hopefully, things will work out well for her with the new equipment."
That it?
So, that is it for me.
Thank you, Trustee Penfield. Close the meeting at this time, regular order of business, and open up the public hearing on, I'm not sure, the building at 87 Lake Street, I believe. Unsafe building and debris of 87 Lake Street, Rouse's Point, notice to comply. And doing that, guidelines for public comments, the public shall be allowed to speak only during the public comment period of the meeting, and that's this period I've got written. Speakers may step to the front of the room. Speaker must give name, address, and organization if any. Speaker must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speaker must be limited, must limit their remarks to five minutes on a given topic, and a speaker may not yield any remaining time to another speaker. The board may, with the permission of the mayor, interrupt the speaker during the remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification of information. And that's how we'll run this public hearing, and it's now open.
Can I get some clarification, please? I'm Mark Schneider, and I represent WWVITV. Now, after the public comment are over, then do we actually have a hearing where we get to present our case and you get to, we get to ask you questions? Or I'm very unclear on what kind of hearing this is. I mean...
I refer that question to the attorney.
Well, I think essentially, the purpose of this public hearing is to address the letter that was originally sent to Mr. and Mrs. Clark, which was dated August 22nd, 2006. Just so the board is aware, since that letter was served, there have been a couple of bits of correspondence that have been sent to Mr. Petrow and myself with respect to the Clark's willingness to rectify the problem. At this point, I would ask Mr. Schneider maybe just to outline for us what the Clark's plans are with respect to the cleanup operation and/or the repair to the remaining structure at 87 Lake Street.
And I'd be happy to do that, but I'm not here as the public. I'm here to represent the respondents in this hearing. So would, I certainly can let you know where we're at, and I do have copies of an asbestos report, but certainly would like the chance to address any claims or charges against my clients. With that being said, originally, my clients, WWVITV, which is owned by Mr. and Mrs. Clark, we read the law that they would not need an asbestos report because they did not demolish the Hotel Holland, the village did that. And under the law, you do not need a permit for cleanup, only for demolition. But I've been in touch with the Department of Labor in Albany, and they said, regardless of who did it, that we would still, under the labor code, need to have an asbestos report. So my clients have done one, they've gotten a clean bill from a certified asbestos inspector who says there is no asbestos on the site. So based upon that, the Clarks are here tonight to ask for a permit, see if there's anything else they would need to do to get a cleanup permit with the asbestos report. Secondly, after talking to the inspector, Mr. Petrow, we, my clients have agreed to get blueprints from a licensed engineer, and they would like to repair the existing structure, and again, do that in a way that complies with the law. First, they want to do the cleanup, and then at some point, we go ahead and start doing the necessary repairs in compliance with the law, and I think we're ready. We may need to get an asbestos report on parts of those repairs, and if we do, we will. So that's where we're at. Did you turn this in yet to them?
Uh, no.
Me?
Can we have an extra copy?
Yeah. Would you like this?
Sure.
And we've already sent you a report from Tom LaBombar, which you can see that does state that there is not a problem.
A separate report from Mr. LaBombar, or, because there was an initial report...
That's the one you have, and he can reduce that. If that report outlines the general repairs, he can draft blueprints that affect it, and we can turn those in, and just work together to make sure that any repairs are done in a lawful way.
And certainly, I'll defer somewhat to Mr. Petrow as well to make sure that I'm covering everything, because I might not. But my understanding, Mr. Petrow, is number one, that we do need to get a complete demolition permit application from Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Because I don't believe the initial application that we received was complete, and Mr. Schneider, I spoke to you about that, I think, last week. So we do need that, and the appropriate fee, I'm assuming, Mr. Petrow, whatever that might be for that permit.
Do you have a blank over the...
How much?
The fee is $15.
Okay, you have an application? We'll, we have never received one, but we'll come and get it and fill it out.
Mr. Clark actually filled one out before and dropped one off, but it wasn't a complete application. It indicated that the engineer that would be doing this plan would be the village, and obviously, the village is doing the removal work.
Okay.
And I believe Mr. Petrow may have sent me a copy of it, because there's a lot of blanks on it. So essentially, we need to have a complete application and be paid.
So we have an application that's not completed, and you'd like us to complete it?
Correct.
So maybe we can get, do you have a copy of that?
No.
No, but I was told the only thing that was incomplete was the asbestos report. So is that now a complete report?
No, because I think in the initial permit that you indicated, you indicated the engineer or the company that would be doing the removal work was going to be the village of Rouse's Point, and that's obviously not the case.
No, what was stated on there is that the demolition was done by the village. It was a demolition permit. What we're saying, it's already been demolished. The village was the one who accomplished that fact. What we're saying is after the fact of the cleanup, so there's no such thing as a cleanup permit. You're still, we're still going underneath the demolition.
Well, under, you have owner being WWVITV, you have contractor, village.
Village is the one who demolished it, that's correct.
But the village is not the contractor doing the...
No, not to clean up.
And you're asking, and that's what needs to be completed. Building, it says demolished, but it's not, it's already down. Stories, size of structure, brief explanation, that's completed. But I guess, as much as anything we need to know is who the contractor is, the address, telephone number.
Well, just put us down, then, and I guess that'll be complete. The owners will, the owners will be doing the work.
We need a copy of the working company hiring.
We're going to do the work ourselves.
So we'll need anything else? Well, actually, what I'll do, Mr. Schneider, this back to you, if you want to change that.
Okay.
Fill out that information on that, I guess, under number two.
Okay, great, and then?
Then, we need, we need the fee for the permit. And I want to be, because we haven't had a chance to review the asbestos report, and we'd like to have an opportunity at least to review that, unless you have some comments, Mr. Petrow.
Before I issue the permit, I want to send a copy of this to the New York Labor Department. If they're comfortable with it, then I'm happy with it.
Okay. Good. And as far as the general repairs outlined by Tom LaBombar, do they seem to cover what needs to be done?
Well, I think what we needed, we needed some plans, I think, as Mr. Petrow indicated with respect to that, standby, registered architect or engineer, which Michelle LaBombar is, of course.
So, but what he pointed out, the general areas of repair, and I could have him reduce that to blueprints or plans, so if that'll work, we'll...
We need drawings of how you're going to repair the roof structure and the southern-facing wall.
Right.
It's a bearing wall, and we need to know how you're going to do that in that structure.
And as well as a building permit, and, you know, the fee for that.
Okay.
What's the time cable to clean up the grave when you're building it down? We're projecting probably once we begin it, it shouldn't take, I mean, we're looking at probably the month. You're allowing us a month, is that correct?
Well... I don't say any time break.
Okay. It's a month to start, but how long will it take you to finish, do you believe, once you start?
Depending on how it goes, it looks like it might be relatively easy, probably talking three to six weeks, three to six weeks.
Just so the board understands, I did have a conversation with Mr. Snyder, it was on Friday, indicated at that time to him that we were still going to go forward with the hearing tonight. Just so they, if the Clarks had any questions, or if Mr. Snyder had any questions about what they needed to provide to Mr. Petrow or to myself or to the board, at least we could maybe clear some of the air about that. Secondly, I also indicated, Mr. Snyder, that it was somewhat pleasing to know that the Clarks were going to take some action to clean up that area that's existing, and also suggested to him that I would probably recommend to the board that at least public hearings be at this point tabled till next month's meeting, or approximately 30 days from today's date, maybe for a follow-up, to see where we stand at that point. But to advertise again at that point for a public hearing on the same issues that were present here this evening, and that gives us some way of following up on progress and to make sure things are progressing, and if they have any other questions or other issues that come up during that period of time, we can address it at that meeting.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at before we proceed with the demolition here?
As soon as I get word back from the Labor Department that that's acceptable to them, I'll issue that date.
I mean, if Mr. Petrow, if he's going to send it down tomorrow, I would hope we'd have some kind of word by at least the end of the week, and at that point, he'll contact you, let you know if your permit, if your permit's ready. But again, we'll need, we'll need a hard one with the fee for that and everything put out, and you pay for the village as well.
I understand that. I just wanted to add, and I think it's important to note because of the, kind of seems like the slant is on the meeting tonight, is that nothing has been done over there because of us, but in reality, three days after that building was torn down by the village, we had a work crew and equipment out there, and we were stopped by Mr. Petrow here. We haven't been allowed to proceed until finally tonight. We've been more than willing, we've been trying to do things. The village has gone in and done, you know, numerous occasions, whatever they felt like. We haven't been able to do anything. So I think that's important to set, you know, the record straight, that the only holdup here has been the village. That's all I have to say.
Right now... I wasn't clear, when? As soon as you get the okay from it, you start right off then?
Yes. We would be prepared, yeah, we're ready right now.
So if it's back next week, we start the next week?
Correct.
And how long is it for Petrow to set? I didn't quite hear you.
I thought, I was estimating up to six weeks. My wife said six to eight weeks, so...
We'll go with Susan's estimate.
The conservative estimate right now is six to eight weeks.
Tom, is there a definite timeframe that we should be looking at?
Well, the local law doesn't provide for a specific, well, it doesn't provide for a specific timeframe if nothing is being done. And again, you know, hearing from Mr. Snyder and reviewing the correspondence over the last week or so that we've received, that I received and Mr. Petrow has received, obviously, they've indicated a willingness to try to proceed and get this work done, which obviously is, is the intent of the law, is to have the owners of the property clean up the situation, which is definitely what they want to do. So I, I mean, as long as we, their counsel, the Clarks, agree to proceed in the manner that I'm proposing, I don't think, one way or another, we're not jeopardizing our rights to take whatever action if we have to later, if they don't comply. But the fact of the matter, it sounds like, is that they want to comply, they want to clean it up, and as long as that remains the case and things progress that way, then I'm reasonably satisfied with that.
Am I mistaken in assuming that compliance could be dependent on a date? I mean, we could be saying, you know, 30 days, 60 days. Is there a date to determine how much compliance there has been, or if in fact there has been compliance?
Well, that's why I guess I'm suggesting that we table this public hearing until, you know, next month's meeting, or whatever the next meeting would be. Whatever the next meeting would be, within the, like, thirty days as a follow-up, to see what kind of progress has been made, and to make sure there is progress being made. Do... Is there an end point where we say nothing is happening? I suppose there probably is. I think we're just getting into the process right now, but to say, do we wait sixty days? Do we wait ninety days? You know, that's hard to assess at this point. I would like to come back next month and see that there has been progress made, and then at that point, we probably would have a definitive idea about how much more time it may take to do the job. And at that point, if we feel it's necessary to set a deadline, then we set a deadline. I don't think it's like your question, Kelly, I'm not trying to avoid your question. I... Tonight, it's hard, obviously, it's hard for us, I think, to put a timeframe on how long it's gonna take, based upon what the Clarks have indicated.
Yeah, this is a high-visibility project. I mean, it's not like we're trying to hide anything.
No.
And the point is, every single person in this room goes up and down that street every day. So it's obvious whether something got started or didn't.
Right, certainly, but you have deferred to your wife's estimate of three weeks to get the pile of rubble cleaned up, and I'm just wondering if perhaps thirty days would be sufficient time to meet that three-week deadline? I said six to eight.
Six to eight weeks, probably.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said three weeks. I thought your husband had said...
Six to eight weeks.
Oh, so now it's six to eight weeks, okay.
Yeah, I don't think they'll be... To answer your question, I don't think they'll be done in thirty days, but I think at least within thirty days, we'll have some kind of good idea about where we're heading. And they may have a better idea about how much longer it may take to complete the job. We may, at that, even in thirty days, require that we table it maybe for another thirty days. And maybe at that point, if we know that two-thirds done, one-half done, whatever the case may be, can say, we'd like to have this done by this day. It's hard to do that right now, when really nothing has begun. So I would, I would hope by next month's meeting, we probably could set a date saying, this is where you are, we'd like to see this done by a certain date. It's hard to do that right now.
And it also predicates on the fact that they can get the permit from Department of Labor. So let's, you know, let's not... The Clarks want to pick up the building. We're... We all in the village are for you picking up the, you know, the debris that's there, regardless of who caused it. But, you know, if you're in a particular situation, because you can't get into the building because you don't have the proper permit, so everybody will be ecstatic when you start cleaning. And, yeah, I think, you know, sixty-day time on that is reasonable, or six to eight weeks, and then, you know, hopefully, you'll put your best foot forward. And I think that we in the village will do everything we can to assist you. That's what we're here for.
I'd like to ask a question, where the debris will be taken to?
No, we're making arrangements right now.
So we're looking for... Obviously, there must be some heavy metals in here and stuff.
Uh, no, the metal's gonna be, I guess, assorted, and, you know, a scrapper is getting the metal, and the rest of it is just gonna be standard construction debris, so...
Dennis has got a scrapyard not five miles from there, but two miles.
Who's that?
Well, Mr. Richard, he had to play landowner, not park owner, right? Dennis, you guys.
Scrap metal. Not landfill, scrap metal.
Scrap metal.
Be careful what you say.
Yeah. I'm sorry, scrap metal, but at least you got a place that you can take your metal for. It's just probably two miles, not even two miles from there, so...
Do you have an estimate when you plan on closing out, holding up, once you get the architect's design or...
Uh, as soon as we can get to it, once we get, once we get some debris removed, you know, we can reach the building, and we'll work on it. But from what's been pointed out by our engineer, there's a... Basically, we're talking about a wall that has to be reconstructed with normal timber framing, which I think, I believe the wall is eight or ten feet in length and standard height, and whatever we decide to do with replacing whatever's on the roof. But most of the roof looks like it's still there, so it's basically, the damage has been on the south side, and then...
I'm fricking that over.
I have two questions. One, what are you planning on doing with the building, the northern section?
Uh, we're gonna probably try and open the first floor back up as a retail space, um, maybe a cafe or coffee shop type thing, and possibly have a... Part that's been knocked down, where the lobby used to be, it used to be all concrete flooring, so we're hoping we can salvage that flat floor and turn it into outdoor seating area for, you know, for...
Cafe.
For the cafe.
And the second and third floors, we were thinking of maybe two deluxe con... a townhouse apartments.
A couple of townhouses, yeah.
And the second question is, what do you think it'll take you to finish the... What will be the timeframe to complete the northern part of the building? Are you talking years, or...
Want to close it up?
To close it up and do your project?
Um, no, I don't think we're talking years, um...
Close it up before the end of the year?
Yeah.
Actual completion, probably not till next year at some point.
They're planning on closing up this year?
Yeah. And getting it as respectable as it can.
As soon as the demolition debris is done, then we'll proceed, you know, observing?
We have no interest in it being an eyesore there. It's a valuable corner, and we respect that.
Because we take a lot of heat here. People are really upset, you know, at that point, you know, what's all?
We had a crew out the week after the fire to take it down.
To do things, so...
And we're, I think we're moving beyond that now.
Right.
Let's get the permits, and then start to dig in.
Right.
And then we'll see where we are in another month or so. We appreciate the fact that that's the steps that you want to take, and that's what we're... Now, reiterate, you know, everybody in the village would like to see the corner, and you people would like to have it cleaned up, so let's try it. Step number one, get the permits, and then start cleaning.
So you're gonna adjourn this for a month, adjourn the hearing?
That's what I would propose to the board. I don't know when the next board meeting will be, thirty days approximately from today's date.
November sixth.
I would propose that be tabled until that time. For a follow-up, again, will have to be advertised for a public hearing, like we're seeing, and, um, basically for a follow-up on the progress being done.
I'll put that in form of motion.
You did?
I will, yeah.
And we'd be happy to agree to be back without having to renotice it, just to, as a, you know, progress report. And if you're not happy, then we can go... It's up to you, if you want to notice it, you can, but we'll be back here on the sixth.
I think the only thing I would have as the next comment possibly is that once we do get the permits and we start cleaning, I would like to see if it's possible, and I don't know if it is, a time limit, a specific time limit on renovations to the north end. Just, you know, just to give us a basic idea.
Show up.
You know, if you go through the winter and you got it all locked up, and, you know, you're starting to renovate, you know, at least wintertime, people are more likely to be inside, not notice as much, and maybe give you a time in the summertime to have the building up and running. Maybe we can try to work on that agenda, to get a timeframe for us on the north side.
We're asking Mr. La Bombard to give you some kind of idea, sorry, Tom La Bombard, make a big plan, you know, the project that you're proposing for that though.
Okay. You need to formally adjourn to this, or are we all ready to go?
You can go, we'll be there any time. Does the board have any other questions? Uh, public hearing's closed at this time. We're back into regular session.
I'd like to make a motion that, once now we announce that the... She's...
Public hearing, I think we were regarding the building on the South Street. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burtz. Any discussion?
November sixth.
November sixth. At, you want it at seven?
Sure.
Seven o'clock, November sixth. Is any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, if you vote by you, you can say a "aye."
Aye.
It was a opposed motion carried. Back to trustee Penfield. Okay, thank you. Trustee Moore?
I have nothing.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Burtz?
I have something. All to you.
I'd like to authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was talking to that young lady next to me.
Are you with it?
I am.
Authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice for the public hearing on local law number three for seniors exemption, and that local law on number three, for the year 2006, to increase the income eligibility limits for the tax exemptions for senior citizens in accordance with chapter one of four taxation and code of the village at this point. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that. Moved by trustee Burtz, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? Then being all discussion, all in favor, vote by you, you can say a "aye."
Aye.
Those are both motion carried. That's it? Thank you.
Well, I have limited income disability for the...
We just got that the other day.
Yeah. The new limit, um, the new limit, limited income disability is twenty-six thousand dollars. Pardon?
Changed this?
We changed something a month ago.
Well, this was a letter from Jimmy Guine.
Yeah, but I think we changed it out already.
They did it all.
I think Tom Rene wrote that law already. On disability?
Yeah, there was a scale.
I've got a number of local laws dealing with both the seniors exemption and the income exemption for, unless it's somebody at brand new, I don't...
That was a number of seniors exemption, I mean, in scale, but this is, um... I do have a... It just says for the basic fifty percent exemption allows each county, city, town, village, or school district to set a maximum income limit at any figure between three thousand and twenty-six thousand. We're not at the very twenty-six thousand. And that's all I have?
Thank you, trustee Burtz. Monica? Nothing? Maggie? Monica? Brian? Tom? Mike?
Yes, I do. States of Shared Services, we had a meeting a week ago, and we had another... We had a conference call this afternoon, and the EFC people, the State Department, they want us to resubmit the grant application, basically as-is, but they want us to fine-tune the language in it. So we're gonna need to get with John and maybe Kelly, I guess, because they have a... They want letters of support from the businesses in the area, rather than a form letter signed by businesses. They're looking for genuinely written letters, which is hard... You score better points, apparently, so...
Are you helping?
A couple, yeah.
What are they supposed to say? What's the topic?
Well, basically, that they support the town and the village's effort in a joint application for a shared municipal grant, and the businesses are in support of this project.
But is there a target for the grant?
It's October twenty-third.
No, no, it's not, I mean, are we asking them to support something? Or are we just asking them to support cooperation?
No, no, we're applying for money to do a study between the two villages and the town on infrastructure.
So the... Okay, I understand, congratulations, thank you.
That's what we do for them.
So we need to, each member of the board or couple members of the board approach the businesses and ask them directly? How are we gonna do that? It's gotta be done by October twenty-sixth?
It's gotta be in by October twenty-third.
It's gotta be by twenty-sixth, so we gotta do it in the next couple of weeks.
Right. The other thing that we need, we have to have another resolution passed by the board, just like we did last year. Basically, we can change the date, the one that was passed, and redo the same wording. We're good to go. It's a formality, but that's what they want, so...
Can we do that on the sixteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
We talked about that in this conference call today, and the sixteenth would be fine. Village of Champagne's gonna do theirs then, the town will do it the week before that. So that, that portion of the application will be done. They seem a lot more confident this time around, that the check's in the mail, but I'll believe it when I see it.
I think they were pretty confident last time.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else, Mike?
Uh, no, that's it.
All righty, Melissa?
Yes, thank you. Just an update on the boat launch. As I'm sure you've seen, we've, the contractors made quite a bit of progress. It's really coming along. The paving is complete, striping's done. They poured the concrete sidewalks today. And what we're waiting for now is basically the finishing touches, the fencing, and timber barrier, and handrail along the lake edge. And then we have some signage to put up, but it's, I think it's in good shape. Doug, I spoke to Doug Faris today, he's very pleased at what's happened in the field. Also, mortgage news. Empire State Development has sent our payment request for processing. That's our fifty-four thousand dollars that we wanted to spend down by the end of September. We got the payment request in, and our rep has sent it off to be processed, so we should be receiving a check, but Becky can pass that on to us then, for me. We did receive, the scheduled date of completion of the project was September twenty-ninth. We received a request for a five-day extension from the contractor, and that would put us, that would put us to the end of this week. We are very much trying to complete the work so that we can reopen the boat launch for this long weekend that's coming up. Jim Abdullah is going to be on the site tomorrow. We're gonna need to either Doug or Eric and try to work through the outstanding issues with the contractor. And the key things are pulling the silk curtain, which is currently blocking access to the boat launch, and making sure that the handrail is installed, because I wouldn't want to reopen it without the handrail now along the lake's edge. I think that might be some unacceptable exposure for the village, if there's supposed to be a handrail there, we reopen the site and it's not in place. We also need to make sure that we have a good punch list of what still needs to be done, so that we're clear with the contractor, the condition of the site, so that, you know, there are claims that the public did damage, and then who's gonna rectify them before we close the project out. So those are the issues we need to work through, but we're gonna do everything in our power to see if we can get that site open so people can use it over the weekend. We'll be able to notify the press, if, in the case that we can work it out in time to get it in, hopefully, for the weekend. So I need to get a sense of the board. Are you willing to, I mean, it's already happening in fact, but is the board willing to allow an extra few days before we start in trying to go for the liquidated damages on the contractor? We have had some changes, we've had some additional work we had to do. We found some of the subsurface materials weren't as good as we could have hoped, and there was extra digging. So if the board's comfortable, we can do a written notification that we are allowing the extra five days of construction. Which I'm counting is Saturday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, because they were on site on Saturday. Okay, with the understanding that as of Friday, we would like the site available to the public. Okay, well, I'll pass that on. The other issue that I need essentially the board on is a change order request, and this is to deal with the fencing on the south side and the small strip between the curbing and the property line on the north side. The mayor, I think, spoke to everyone about the idea of installing a strip of stone underneath the fence to make it easier to maintain, and also to install matching crushed stone at the northern side around the timber barrier. Again, making it easy to keep the site neat, not having to deal with all the mowing and trimming in those areas. Uh, we were... Mr. Carter supplied us with a price of seven eighty-five per square foot. That would mean between twenty-five hundred and three thousand for both the north and south work. So if the board is willing, we will go ahead and have the change order drawn up and have that work done, so we can close out the project. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I like the idea of the fencing on the south side with the crushed stone, but on the north side, that's gonna be on the... How's it gonna look with the timber, if you don't have any grass here? Aesthetically, is it gonna be all right? Is it gonna look okay? What do you got?
I don't know where the timber's going.
Where's the timber? Is the timber going on the north side of the curbing?
North side of the curbing, right.
Right where that's...
It'll be a red tide, that's tarmac, so you might... It's all you're gonna get, it's weeds in there, you know?
How, how, what's the depth of the timber? Oh, why?
Four by four?
Yeah, four by four.
Four by four?
Uh, well, there's the posts and then the rails.
The rail, yeah, it's not a rail.
So it's a fence, is it a fence?
Eight by eight?
Eight by eight.
So how, how wide, Brian, would you say that cut is between the tarmac and the curbing? The new curbing? And so there's going to be.
Three feet at most?
I don't think it's three, no.
Well, they cut the tarmac.
Yeah.
On line?
Yeah.
There's a piece of tarmac that has to come out.
More tarmac?
Yeah.
On Rico's line?
Yes.
Really?
Yes, they cut another line down through there.
Oh, no. What is the reason for taking more out?
I think to put the fence on the property line.
Okay, so it could be three feet then?
Yeah, with the cut, I think it's three feet.
Okay. So how wide is the fence? Seeing that, the fence is not, it has no real width at all.
Eight by eight.
It's, you know, the timber, it's picture like a guy rail, a timber guy rail.
See, I did not realize that it was going to be open up to three feet.
Do you want a crush stone or do you want grass?
Well, for grass.
Not me, because I'll tell you why. You can't get a lawnmower in there.
George, it's three feet wide.
You can't get a lawnmower in there. You're going to end up with the mess that we had before down there with weeds growing up around the fence.
You might not be able to get a riding mower in here.
I'll beg the lawnmower can get in the three-foot area.
I'm telling you.
It might actually have a brush line.
Go look at it. Or go look at it. Weed whacker. That's what I say, they don't have the manpower now.
And you don't want to give a deadline for mowing your lawn either.
Yeah. I still, I still think it's going to look good.
Three feet of crushed stone?
Mike wants to do his whole fence around here. And I, I'm telling you, go look at it, Kevin. Before you say it's three feet, go look at it.
Yeah, but Brian said they're going to take some more out.
From the curbing to where they cut it, I think it's around three feet.
Because it's already, it's already, it's got to be already eighteen or twenty inches now.
What do you think it's going to look like, I guess? If, that's my thoughts. What's it going to look like with crushed stone and you got a wooden rail fence? I mean, I can see on the south side, we got grass. We're going to have a nice stone fence. I mean, we're going to have nice stone so we don't have the grass growing up underneath the fence. Now, you got grass on both sides, it gives it more aesthetic, right? But on the, on the north side, you're going to put a nice brown rail fence and then tarmac underneath it. It's going to look like crap.
Not tarmac.
We're going to put, or crushed stone. Stone.
Grass.
Grass.
It's a, you know, like a, like a kind of Adirondack fence, it's about that high. And it's cedar rails.
I don't think we have a picture of that one, so you're looking.
Yes, there was, there was on the boot prints.
It's, it's a very rustic-looking low timber fence.
The brown?
It's going to be cedar with a natural finish, so it'll end up.
And that's tied to Rico's parking lot.
That is right next to, now, now, I'm getting some new information because my understanding was, I was looking at what's cut, which is quite narrow, and that was the way I was approached. So the, the additional space I'll put before the board in terms of how you want to handle that.
I'm going to take a look tomorrow morning.
Wonder what we table it on?
Can't table it, oh, you got to have it done by the end of the week. The, the north side I knew nothing about. I knew nothing about it until tonight. We were, we were talking about the south side doing it because it's a cyclone fence.
I guess the white, the white crush stone, not a grade, but it has to be like almost a white stone.
And I don't think that's that far. And it, is he going to put the fence tight to the car, tarmac? Or is he going to put it in the middle? That's the next thing.
You said it was going to be tight to the tarmac.
I, I thought it was, but I didn't know about three feet.
But you knew about the additional cut?
I didn't know about that.
Okay.
When we talked, when I talked to Dougie down there, that's where the fence was going, right where it was, right there.
That's what I thought.
It's news to me too, George. I, first I have my eye.
They cut it toward the end of the week, last week. They cut a new line.
The problem's going to be is if, if they have the fence with the rail facing into the parking lot and we have the grass exposed on the Rico side, on the, on the north side, then when, when people get close, they're going to, they're going to end up gouging out that grass. It's not the same.
It won't be possible, John. They'll have to go to the fence. The fence is tight to the tarmac.
No, which side is it?
Does it matter?
Well, I have to go on, I'm sorry. Second-class trip.
So what, let me ask you this question. If that's about three feet wide, that is just a strip of grass that goes nowhere?
That's right.
No, it just goes right there.
Yeah, it goes nowhere.
Goes nowhere.
It just goes nowhere.
Isn't there a green area down by the lake with a tree there? Or a, so it would go around?
It would kind of be a green, a green perimeter for the side. There it goes in from the road and then they use a little green area.
Rasp around.
The way it was presented to, to me, my understanding, or I think George's was the same, that there was not enough space really to do a decent planting of grass. You were looking at, I would say eighteen inches maybe would be the cut that I looked at. If in fact it's doubled in size because they've cut the pavement, it's a difference. It is a very different situation. It's also going to change your crushed stone price considerably. If you're looking at doubling the volume of your crushed stone.
So he must know what it was because he's given us the price.
Yeah.
I believe that was price, unless Jim knows, you know, I don't know that Jim Abdullah, he, he put the price together for us. I don't believe he's, he was aware of that. He, at least I, my understanding would be that would be for what he originally referred to me, which was that kind of little trench. See, again, if it's, if it's going to a green space, my preference would still be grass. Otherwise, you've got crushed stone leading out to a little patch of green grass. Who's going to mow that little patch of green grass that's out there on the end?
Good question.
I was under the impression that you're only going to do the south side.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I was, I was under the impression you're going to do the north side.
Like I said, was done tonight.
I, with stone.
With stone.
Because we talked about, the mayor and myself were down there looking between the building and the fence and it's doing tight. And we were talking that would be hard to maintain that area. I didn't know anything about the north side.
Neither.
Well, keep it, keep it grass? I mean, that's fine. I can, I can just let them know, save you some money and.
See, I guess it all depends on how much, you put your post in, right? Is the, is there going to be some?
Eight inch square post?
Yeah.
Only most.
Well, is there going to be, is there going to be an overhang? Is the grass from the post going to be a foot and a half on, on the north side? That's the big one.
The south side. The south side, right, Brian?
Right, you'll have more grass on the south side. The fence is there to stop Rico's cars going forward over the grass and over the curb. I put this shortwood fence, but right along in the tarmac.
Well, it actually, I think, was, was installed originally planned to, to create a barrier so that people would have to cross something and know they're not supposed to park there from the marina. I think that was the, the purpose of it, but they're rather quite curved here now. Right, but it's, right. Oh, yeah, I don't think you have to worry about cars rolling from the boat launch into the fence now in the other direction.
It's the other direction.
Which, John, your grass is going to be on the south side of that fence. But if the fence is, is right adjacent to the tarmac, there is that concern, is there not?
It depends if it's on the north side of the, 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 the north side. If it's on the south side of Rico, if the tarmac is tight and the post goes south, then there's no problem.
I need a motion to get, to get a change order.
Do you want to go by width of grass?
Huh? Your vote counts, guy.
Well, I don't know. We're trying to make it, I mean, we're not going to just end up having something. We spent all this money then and it doesn't look pleasing to the eye, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, if some people had their way, we'd tarmac all the way from the south side fence all the way to Montgomery Street and I don't want to see that. So we don't want to have more tarmac than we need. Especially if we got a nice cedar rail fence.
I, I agree with you. If, if I had known it was going to be that wide, I wouldn't have brought the crushed stone in the first place, but, but it was brought to me as a, a narrow trench by, by the engineer, so I don't know what to tell you. Not our, I mean, Jim Abdullah, so. So you want to go if it's eighteen inches or less crushed stone? If it's more than eighteen inches, grass? How's that for a comment?
It's going to be white. That won't be so bad. It'll be white, white crush stone.
If it's eighteen inches or less, go with the stone. If it's more than eighteen inches, make it grass. Because, but someone needs to check that, that end area near the lake. Because it, I guess, in my opinion, if there's that grassy area near the lake, we should make it grass because somebody's going to have to mow that anyway. And what are they going to do? Push the mower over crushed stone to get out there?
There's grass at the lake and there's grass at the road.
No, that's not going to be grass at the road there.
Or shrubs.
I'm going to cut on the shrubs.
How about Brian, a rough area of the grass at the lake? Rough size?
By the trees?
Yeah. Four by four? Or bigger than that? Well, then somebody's going to have to mow anyway. We may as well make it grass.
What I'm trying to show you, they put that fence in there like that. He's got to put a mower between the curbing and the fence.
But Brian says it's three feet wide, George.
It won't be after you put the fence in.
Well, that's what they, they, what? Put a weed whacker in there.
Can't get them to weed whack here.
Well, that's, that's got to be addressed to them.
I'll address it for you. Hire another person.
Oh, no, that's another issue.
Okay, put it grass.
Put it grass. Grass. The grass. Kelly had the idea, if it's less than eighteen inches.
But if it's grass on the end, if there's something that's bigger than four by four near the lake that they have to mow anyway, why not make it grass the whole way?
Let's put it this way. Table this issue until we look at it tomorrow.
Very, very good.
First thing in the morning. And we'll have a special meeting tomorrow night, four o'clock. And I'm going to tell you, you've got to look at this before you make a decision. You're, you're trying to make a decision without, without even looking at it.
And we don't have the dimensions, so we don't have the information. Don't hold us accountable until we.
If we have a meeting tomorrow night.
We'll go there right now?
Change order? Or tomorrow morning? Go to tomorrow morning, whatever, on your way to work.
Why don't we go here on the way home?
What?
If we make a decision, no, the lights are there.
Light's ain't up yet.
Well, are the cuts there though, so we can tell what tarmac they're removing?
Yes, they cut a line.
They cut a line. I'd say we go right after.
Additionally, because the last time I was there was last Thursday. Sorry, John. Have they cut more tarmac out since Thursday?
No.
I don't think it's Saturday. Can I?
I don't think they took the tarmac out yet. They cut the line.
Okay, okay.
There is, there is tarmac, but it's not there.
And you know what? I think you're right.
They did cut a line. I watched the guy cut the line.
Okay.
I said, why is he cutting out farther?
All right, well, let's go. I can go look at it. You know, not, if the board doesn't, I don't know. It would be best if we could address this as soon as possible. If we do want them off the site by Thursday. He wants to go after. If we go after the meeting, we all take a look, that would probably be the best thing and then get it resolved and because.
Everybody down to the boat launch.[1632.93]